I just want to check, Mayor.
Yeah, we could call it, Mayor, if you like.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's July 18th, 2023 City Council meeting. I would like to ask that everyone please silence any electronic devices. At this time, we're going to have our invocation. Please pray with me. Lord, we thank you once again for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon our city. And Father, as we creased the midpoint of 2021, there are many positives. There are many stories bearing good news and good fortune, and many thoughtful ideas from the past turning into realities in the present. Lord, we're so very thankful for your guidance and for providing solutions when problems arise. Even with many positives, there are still areas of need. We pray tonight that those in need will be blessed and burdens lifted. For those in need of housing, we ask that you provide. For those in need of work, we ask that you open doors. And for those in need of food and clothing, we ask that our many volunteer organizations receive the funding necessary to meet the demands that we face in our community. Tonight, we recognize scouting as we do each year this time. Father, please bless each and every leader, their supportive family networks, and the scouts individually as they complete their journey towards the rank of Eagle Scout. May the lessons taught through scouting become lifetime lessons for each and every young person influenced by the programs provided. Father, please continue to bless this council. Give us knowledge and wisdom from above that we may collaborate as a unit for the purpose of making better decisions for our community. Bless our city staff and those that have prepared our research materials for tonight's agenda and continue to provide solutions for the many needs throughout our city. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. This evening, once again, we're very pleased to, as we do annually, to recognize our Eagle Scouts that are in the community. This council and previous councils have had a longstanding ceremony each year at this time. So we'll ask that Alamance District Executive for the Boy Scouts of America, Kirby Dunn, please come forward. Welcome, Kirby. I personally have two boys that are Eagle Scouts. I served on our executive committee for the Old North State Council for many years. Bob Lewis has had, and others have had a lot of influence. So we welcome you. And if you could, maybe if you want to introduce the troops that are represented, and then if council will come down, I think Beverly, we're going to come down and do the, we'll hand out the certificates while Kirby goes through their accomplishments. Does that sound good?
Yes, sir. So we have four troops represented tonight. We have 4009, which is out. And then we have Troop 26. We have Troop 40065. We have Troop 4001. So thank you guys so much for having us tonight. Boy scouting, as Mr. Mayor said, my name is Kirby Dunn. I'm the district executive for Alamance, so I oversee everything scouting. So just in Alamance County, we had 38 different organizations that benefited from Eagle Scout projects. From that, we serve countywide, councilwide, we serve 2,667 scouts and youth. Out of those 2,667, we collected more than 25,000 pounds of food this year. And we also did more than 10,000 service hours councilwide. So just in Alamance, if we break that down, we serve 535 youth. Out of that food, we raised 6,252 pounds, which is amazing. We fed a lot of people in Alamance County, Burlington, throughout. And out of that, we had over 4,000 service hours, which is amazing. We did a lot of help in this community, and these Eagle Scouts did a lot of help to service-oriented places. If we were not supported by people like yourself and by our troop leaders and by our volunteers, we could not change the lives of men and women in our community. And we've been able to do this for 113 years. So we are here tonight to celebrate the accomplishments of these Eagle Scouts. The Eagle Scout is the highest rank that they can achieve in scouting. It's really, it's a great thing, I myself and the Eagle Scout, so I believe wholeheartedly in the program. The Eagle Scouts go through a lot of defeats. It is a long process between the paperwork and more paperwork, and then finding the volunteers to do their project. And then, once they get to that final project, they just got to sit back and watch the volunteers work and do what the volunteers have to do, what they say, which is a hard thing, not to be hands-on during it. But then again, thank you guys so much for having us tonight. We really appreciate it. I'm glad to know that we have such a supporting, I have such a supporting district and a such supporting community. So thank you very much. I believe we are ready to recognize them?
Yep.
James P. Alagretta is a member of Troop 4009, Alamance District, for his Eagle Scout project. He did a community service project for his, for an elementary, for an educational outdoor area with a conservation element for the Hallbridge School. Tristan McKagan Barnhill is a member of Troop 26 out of the Kayla District for the Boy Scouts of America. And for his community service project, he built a shelf in the NCLA's band room for the North Carolina Leadership Academy. Benjamin Eli Jordan is a member of Troop 4065 out of Alamance District for the Boy Scouts of America. And for his community service project, he worked on Save the Marnock Monarch Butterflies for the community of Saxmo Hall, North Carolina. David Kelly Whitefield III is a member of Troop 4001, Alamance District for the Boy Scouts of America. And for his community service project, he built a boardwalk in Shalaford Park in Alamance for Parks and Recreation. We have several Eagle Scouts who cannot be here tonight, so I'll only go and read off their names so they can be recognized. We have Sawyer Allen, Luke Adress, Evan Austin, Sean Bostman, McPherson Brown, Zach Bryan, Matthew Clayton, David Cooper, Ryan Crabtree, Jacob Flack, Nathaniel Hartle, Spencer Humble, Lucian Aylerdale, Jason Matthews, Christian McPherson, Esten Murphy, Evan Plaster, Ryan Saler, Benjamin Slavertar, Adam Schaefer, Alex Soiler, Benjamin Skidser, James Thomas, Fennan Triplet, Wyatt Turner, Jarrett Ward. So on behalf of the mayor and city council, we thank each of you for all of your hard work and attained the highest rank and honor Eagle Scout award. And we encourage each of you to continue. You're committed to excellence.
Now, we do believe we have some pretty dynamic meetings, but for any scout that would not like to see the rest of it, you're welcome to step out. Next on the agenda is the Code of Ethics disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, we'll call on our city clerk, Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it's my responsibility through my duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask that there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda item.
I have no conflicts, but I do want to make note of a couple of items. I've spoken with Mr. Huffman about it. On the consent agenda, additions to the consent agenda, item L, I do serve on the Board of Trustees for Alamance Community College. That was a college operations issue. The board was not involved in that discussion at all. And city attorneys informed me that I do have no conflict. And then, item B, under the consent agenda, the city is entering into an agreement with Kimbley Horn. My son, my oldest son, Nathan, is an employee of Kimbley Horn, but we have no financial interest, no gain, nor any conversation throughout the agreement. And again, David, are we good on that?
You're good on that disclosures.
As I already said, also, on that same item B, I have a son-in-law who is a senior as an employee with Kimbley Horn. But again, just click that I'm.
Okay, so, any other conflicts? Everybody good? Okay, all right. Next item is approval of minutes. At this time, we'll entertain a motion for the minutes as presented.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item, there's been requests for additions to the consent agenda, which will be item K, the adoption of the 2023 City of Burlington Emergency Operations Plan as discussed yesterday evening. Item L, Fire EMT Training Apprenticeship Program Agreement and Budget Amendment. Item M, Resolution for Public Hearing, Zero Elrato Street, Voluntary Contiguous Annexation. Item N, Resolution for Public Hearing, 619 Spence Street, Voluntary Contiguous Annexation. And item O, Resolution for Public Hearing, 623 Spence Street, Voluntary Contiguous Annexation. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the additions. So moved. We have a motions or second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is the adoption of the agenda. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with the add-ons.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about these items, please let us know. Item A, to authorize the city manager to execute Contract Amendment I with Transdev Services, Inc. for the operation and maintenance of fixed route and ADA Paratransit Transit Service Agreement for Linked Transit. Item B, to approve an agreement between the City of Burlington and Kimbley Horn and Associates, Inc. upon concurrence from the city attorney and finance and risk management director to prepare a transit development plan and transit facility study for Linked Transit. Item C, to approve the reclassification of the following two positions in the Recreation and Parks Department as recommended effective at the next pay cycle. Assistant Golf Course Manager from Level 22 to Level 27, Golf Course Pro Manager from Level 25 to Level 30. Item D, to approve the reclassification of the following two positions in Occupational Health and Human Services, Human Resources Department as recommended effective at the next pay cycle. Medical Office Receptionist, Level 20 to Administrative Assistant, Level 22. Assistant HR Director, Level 37 to HR Generalist, Level 34. Item E, to approve the reclassification of the Record Supervisor position at the Police Department from Level 26 to Level 29, as recommended by the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, effective at the next pay cycle. Item F, to approve a bank financing agreement with National Bank, adopt the bank, adoption of the banking and reimbursement resolutions, and approve Budget Amendment 2024-01 for general fund financed equipment, capital lease financing, authorizing the mayor, city manager, director of finance and risk management, and city clerk to sign and execute these bank loan documents. Item G, to approve Budget Amendment 2024-02 for fiscal year 2022/2023 capital projects, equipment carried forward. Item H, to approve Budget Amendment 2024-03 for the NC 62 waterline construction at the Burlington-Alamance Regional Airport hangar. Item I, to approve Budget Amendment 2024-04 for Recreation and Parks in partnership with Kaboom and Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina for the installation of an inclusive playground project grant match. Item J, to make the following advisory boards and commission appointment effective upon city council approval. These are spelled out in detail in your agenda. Item K, to adopt the 2023 City of Burlington Emergency Operations Plan. Item L, to approve an agreement between the City of Burlington and Alamance Community College for the Fire EMT Training Apprenticeship Program, five Fire EMT Training positions, and approve Associated Budget Amendment 2024-05 to cover related expenses. Item M, to adopt a resolution to set a date of public hearing for August 15th, 2023, to consider the annexation of a parcel located at Zero Elrato Street, parcel ID 139850. Item N, to adopt a resolution to set a date of public hearing for August 15th, 2023, to consider the annexation of a parcel located at 619th Spence Street, parcel ID 125911. And item O, to adopt a resolution to set a date of public hearing for August 15th, 2023, to consider the annexation of a parcel located at 623 Spence Street, parcel ID 125904. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item entered into public hearing, item one, under public hearings. A public hearing has been scheduled to receive public input for the consideration of proposed changes to reinstate bus fares for Linked Transit. At this time, we'll recognize our transit manager, John. And welcome, John. It's good to see you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. John Ando, Linked Transit Manager. Today, I'm here requesting that the council conducts a public hearing to consider reinstating bus fares on Linked Transit. After the public hearing and you gather feedback from the public, we will request direction on how the city council would like to proceed. We did notify the public in relation to this proposed fare reinstitution by notification in the newspaper, flyers on the buses, social media, website. And at this time, staff has received no comments from the public. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Not any questions from council on this item?
I've not received anything, no.
John, we took those away, wait, 20?
In 2020, as part of the COVID-19 pandemic.
So it's been almost three years.
Almost three years, yes.
Yep, and I think it's worth mentioning, and certainly for the minutes, that we did this as a, during COVID, as a sort of a stopgap in a trial period, that we had a lot of discussion about it, and let's just see kind of where this takes us. But obviously, public transit's going to continue to grow and change, and it's going to continue to be an important piece of the services that the city provides. So the timing to reinstate this and bring it back is certainly one that staff, I know, has looked at along the way. So we appreciate their efforts.
One quick question, John. When is anticipated effective date?
We haven't set one yet because we still have to establish, like, protocols for fare collection, purchase bus passes, fare boxes, and associated equipment. So we anticipate late fall, early winter. But we will put a notice to the public at least 30 days in advance to let them know the exact date of when the fares would be taking effect.
Yep. Any other questions for John? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments. Anyone on this room would like to speak on this item? Please come forward and state your name and address for the city clerk, if you would.
My name is Mary Jensen. I live at 1322 West Davis Street. And I would like to say I would have submitted a comment to the Linked Transit from the newspaper, except that I don't really read the newspapers. I wasn't aware. So I would like to speak up in favor of keeping it fare-free for the time being. Burlington is a very car-dependent city with its current layout. There's a website called Walksport that rates cities on its walkability, and Burlington receives the lowest scores all across everything. Most errands in this city require a car to complete. However, Burlington is also a city that is highly impacted by poverty compared to other cities within the state. The current state-level poverty is 19.1%. Here in Burlington, it is 23.3. Not everybody can afford to maintain a car. Not everyone can afford gas prices. Not everyone can afford car insurance. And for these individuals, having access to public transportation like buses can make a huge amount of difference in their ability to find jobs, get to work, go grocery shopping. And part of that is keeping it affordable for these individuals who are already struggling. To re, when the fares in many cities across the U.S. were moved for pandemic management purposes, ridership in these places went up by 20% to 60%, depending on the city. So obviously, removing the fare was very beneficial to increasing ridership and making it more accessible to the public to use the public transit. Removing that and putting the fare back in place would only serve to continue to put these obstacles in the way of these people who are already financially suffering. I think that because public transportation is a public service, it isn't something you can really measure in terms of capital and profit gained. It's measured in terms of lives benefited by its presence. And reinstating this fare would affect people's lives, affect their families, affect their livelihoods. And so I would speak in favor of keeping it fare-free.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from this side of the room that would like to speak on this item? Anyone on this side would like to speak? Hearing no others. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. At this time, we will, have any other questions from Mr. Ando or city staff, or we'll entertain a motion on the recommendation to reinstate the fares as requested.
John, can you explain the fare, the system itself, in terms of if someone, if it's one purchase per day or various times they're on the bus, how many times the dollar thing may come into play in terms of trips? Or is it, you purchase the fare in the morning to go to a certain location, is that good for the rest of the day, or how does that work for the public?
There'll be three different fare types. There's the one-way fare. So every time you board the bus, you pay basically a price. There will be a day pass. So that pass will give you unlimited rides for the day. And then there will be a 31-day pass for those that have, like, that work, and they can buy this 31-day pass. And it would pay for itself after approximately 10 rides, 10, 15 rides. So it would be affordable for the low-income community.
Did we ever see, I know other municipalities, there are several municipalities that are reinstating fares. I've talked to several in the last month. The connectivity between municipalities, some share, I guess, fare cards. Do we see ever go into something like that maybe, perhaps?
The Piedmont Authority for Regional Transportation, or PART, they manage a regional fare program. And we're in discussions with them on how we can participate in that regional fare program. Again, it's a system called UMO, and High Point, PART, Greensboro Transit Agency, and Davidson Count, no, Davidson, no, they're free. Those are the three that are currently participating, and Winston-Salem Transit Authority, those four. So we would become the fifth participant. So that's part of the efforts to reinstitute the fare structure. That's one of the things that we would finalize as a package, and necessarily will come before council on private participation.
So therefore, as a service that we're providing, we can sort of be the leg that may maybe get someone in need of public transit through the system to go to Winston if they wanted to. They could connect the park, go to the next leg, and continue forward.
That is correct, yes.
I'm disappointed that you haven't heard any comments from the public. I'm presuming that ridership was up.
Correct. Ridership grew. We saw a significant increase while the system was fare-free. I anticipate, we might see a slight decline, but as the system has matured, now has evening service, Saturday service, it's more available to area residents and visitors, that it's become a visitors, that it's become a, a part of their lives, and the price structure that has been set is fairly affordable to allow for those to still afford. We are also looking into grants that maybe could pay for a subsidy for low-income residents, perhaps like if they are receiving assistance from Med, Medicaid, or HUD, that we can, we can further reduce their price.
The most concerned about kids, having it fare-free for kids, but I think that's hard to administer, but helping kids get used to using public transportation seems like a good idea to me, is there, have, do you know of any program where people are doing that?
I'm, I'm fairly familiar, particularly in the West Coast, there are several transit systems have actually gone, like, fare-free for youth, uh, ages zero to twelfth grade, to encourage youth to use the bus for school and jobs and after-school activities. Um, out here in the East, I'm not fairly familiar beyond, uh, systems that have gone just completely fare-free.
Do any kids ride our buses?
Not, not particularly, we see more from, uh, low-income, um, those that are going to jobs in the service industry, such as retail, restaurants, or those that are going to college. We are going to be doing a marketing program, uh, we have a, a draft marketing plan that we did present to the Public Transit Advisory Commission, and that we'll be implementing the efforts of that marketing plan, and as part of that, some of the target market is the youth community, as well as seniors to utilize in Link.
I'd just see results of that coming up.
Definitely.
Well, the one thing about public transit, it's always evolving and changing a little bit, is the needs change, as funding changes, as the system grows, as you have to reinvest in capital, and, you know, I would encourage staff to sort of, um, gauge some of the changes that we're making, and just see how things are, are going and proceeding, if there are grants that are necessary, then, yeah, let's pursue that, and to Kathy's point, if there's a way to, um, really work to assist our young people, um, I think, even if it was for a period of time, summer, whatever.
Summer.
Yeah, uh, I remember, um, helping work a, a college fair at the mall, and Link Transit pulled up and seven kids got off, and, um, you know, that was, uh, I was chatting with them about riding the bus, asking them where they were coming from and this and that, and what, so their mother couldn't bring them, it was the only way they could get there, to the college fair, so, very important piece of what we do, but, decisions that we make can always evolve into other decisions, if we see the need, then I think we just address the need as we see it.
Um, we could talk to the Burlington Graham Metropolitan Planning Organization, uh, they do have a program called the Congestion Relief Program, and as part of that, uh, like, first, is we could make a request to subsidize youth fares, to like, so that maybe the youth can get a pass, um, by filling out an application, and then that can give them access to the transit system for a period of time.
Especially, I would think, in the summer months.
Yeah, in summer months, okay.
You may want to mention the discount fare for students.
And discount fare, no, the students will be eligible for the discount fare under the current new fare policy, but if we want to go further beyond, that's where we'll have to look at some subsidy, um, pro, uh, grants from potentially B G M, like, M D O.
Maybe we should know this, but, but I don't, uh, for the middle schools and high schools, uh, are, do we have stops relatively close to, say, Williams, Turntown, Broadview, Cummins, where if a child chooses to that, that option in terms of trying to get to school in the morning?
I'll say we have Link Transit to some of the schools, but not all of the schools, and in a reasonable proximity, so, um, as, since, um, you've, the Council just recently approved us to do a transit development plan with Kemley Horn, that's one of the things that they'll be looking at, is the present system as is designed, and how do we make the system more accessible to more, uh, residents of all demographic groups? Youth definitely is a population that Transit serves the best, so if we can make a system that's attractive to the youth, that they can understand, that's one way of getting youth to take more advantage of, of Link.
The only way that would work with public school transportation would be, um, if a child lives less than a half a mile from the school.
There's that, yeah.
Because the, the routes are created by where individuals live.
Right.
So, I, I don't see, I don't see that happening.
Frequency is also going to be an issue.
I'm sorry?
And frequency.
Yes.
And bell time coordination. The present Link system runs every ninety minutes, so it doesn't necessarily coordinate well with school bell times, currently it's more with work shifts.
And then, at dismissal, there's no way that would work.
Yeah, so, that's the consultant team looking at how to make the system more accessible to all demographic groups, that's one of the things they'll be looking at, is how do you bring that ninety-minute frequency down, that's in a cost-efficiency, a cost-efficient manner. So, hopefully, in the next year, as we have public meetings, we'll do presentations with the Council, Public Transit Advisory Commission, we'll be able to get some good feedback from you as the policymakers, so that they can help guide the study, to give us, uh, good recommendations for implementation in the future.
Good, good timing, uh, for that as well, any other questions for John? If not, we'll entertain a motion on, um, this request.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the proposed changes to reinstate bus fares for Link Transit.
Thank you, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and appreciate the conversation for that, as we move forward with the transit study and the things that we're conducting, there, if we see the need, then let's be sure we, we get involved in it, so. At this time, we'll transition into public comments, I believe there were none, is that right, none Beverly, no public comments, um, so we'll transition to City Council comments, a couple of, uh, items, um, one is we have National Night Out that will take the place of our next meeting, is it August first?
August first.
August first, so, I'm assuming that the, um, sort of the itinerary and where things are going to be, it's going to be forthcoming for everybody?
Exactly, yep, they're working on that now, getting the communities signed up, getting signage out, and then we get a whole list.
Okay. Just want to counsel member while I know where all the ice cream's at, that's what he.
Ask you, I got my feelings hurt.
There will be ice cream.
Thank you.
One other item is, uh, I think I've heard that, uh, the entertainment venue at Brunton Athletics Stadium, it's been a, a huge hit, I do know there's been a concert or two scheduled, I think I've heard.
For everyone in the family.
Yep, which is, uh, really nice, and then, um, the completion for the upper level may be the twentieth, give or take.
So, we'll have a partial completion, but in the top, if everything goes planned, we'll be hoping for Thursday night's game, so folks could enjoy, uh, being up on top and possibly looking at beverage as well out there.
Yeah, and I think that might be Chamber Night, so.
It's coming Thursday night?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
These guys have done a nice job, pretty quickly get, a lot of credit goes to staff, working with them, and also.
A lot of heat put on Nolan.
Yes.
I asked him if we'd broke down the Paramount yet, he said no.
They did a nice job over there, guys.
Yeah, really nice, and you hear a lot of comments about that, and I think as the word gets out about the, the concerts, that's, and, you know, cross-city commerce is really important, and to have a venue that will create some additional cross-city commerce will really work to, um, change the layout of that area a little bit, so that's a, a very important piece, very, very cool. Um, there was an item, and I'll, everyone probably, uh, I'll remind you that we had some changes to our Amtrak schedule, and I know we had a citizen or two reach out, and I just wanted to, um, maybe elaborate on that a little bit, um, I spoke with Jason Orthner, who was with the N C D O T Rail Division Director, um, multiple times, and Liz Mackam, I think, Communications Officer for Rail and I M D, about this, and they readily admit that they didn't include municipalities enough in their discussion points, as they were trying to look at regional rail and how to, uh, adjust schedules and that sort of thing. Um, we did not lose a route, there's a lot of people think that we, or a stop, that we lost a stop, we didn't, but we lost a, uh, timely stop, I think, from, from the early, early morning, and it was, um, you know, largely, if you think about Raleigh to Charlotte speeding that up, is kind of what the purpose is, based on, on what I've been told, so, um, impacted was us, uh, High Point, and I think Salisbury, the Mayor of High Point and I discussed it a couple of times, and respectfully aired our displeasure about it, so, uh, I'm not sure at this point what is going to be done, if anything, uh, because it took place, I think, July tenth, is when it started, but, uh, we're still in conversation with them about it, we're trying to have a joint Zoom meeting with, uh, the Mayor of Salisbury, the Mayor of High Point, and myself, and I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on that, uh, and let everybody know that we just didn't sit idly by, um, it caught us off-guard, just like it did the public, so.
I, I, I think I said earlier, um, I spoke with, um, the D O T Chair, and Mike Fox, then I shared my information with the, the individual citizens here at Burlington that talked to me about it, and, and Mayor, you were correct, in saying that timely matter is the problem. We didn't lose the route, that, that first morning route goes straight from Raleigh to Charlotte, and the goal is three hours. The, the route that most of our commuters are using is like eleven o'clock and three o'clock, meaning if you take that three o'clock, you're going to get home at eight, so there's still some concern, and I wouldn't hesitate, Mayor, that maybe you and other mayors get together and write sometime, type of letter, and share that.
Well, we're, we're definitely trying to get, um, some more information about it, and, uh, that's good for them, so what we'll do, maybe, um, once we establish this Zoom meeting, and kind of figure out the format we're going to do, I'll, I'll have staff craft something that comes from the Council in entirety, so I think that would be important.
Thank you.
What's the normal timeline for a stop? I mean, in terms of?
In reference to how long?
Yeah.
I, I don't know, please.
It doesn't say on any of their information that they've given me.
I think that also depends on the amount of people riding as well, I've ridden to Raleigh before, from here.
Let me understand what you're saying, but we didn't lose a stop?
We did not lose a stop, we still have the same amount of stops we've always had, we just had one stop that was early in the morning, moved to mid-morning, and one stop that was later moved to mid-afternoon.
Right, that early, eight to four, whatever it was.
That's, that's the one that's.
So, somebody wanted to confuse.
Right.
Say, what's the problem?
Or work schedule would be, it would be virtually impossible.
And I think we've all received some letters as well from citizens about this topic. Yes, sir?
I just wanted to add that, um, we were made aware of this change about two months ago, and we, at, at Linkside, we did receive about three comments, of folks that were using the previous schedule for commuting purposes, particularly from Charlotte to Burlington, or Burlington to Raleigh, so they felt that they were disgruntled by the change.
Yep, and I will say, to your credit, N C D O T, the Rail Division Director, Jason Orthner, spoke to everyone that was disgruntled over it, so they personally made contact with those people that contacted, um, City Hall to, to air their displeasure via email and things, so they were very engaging, but our concern was that we would have liked to have been part of the discussion.
In advance.
And not seeing the press release.
Right.
And then, not know anything about it, and they readily admit they did not, uh, utilize stakeholder input well enough, they were just looking at rail efficiency to get from Raleigh to Charlotte.
The number of stops between Raleigh and Charlotte, how many is it?
Well, it's zero.
For those, none now, it was three.
It was, that's right, three.
It was Burlington, High Point, Salisbury.
Right.
They, they normally, how long, I think, the period is, how long would that?
That's what we just, we're talking about, I, I don't know the answer to that. But obviously, what I was told is they were making the run, the previous setup, they were making that run in three hours and ten minutes.
Yeah.
And they wanted it to be less than three.
So, we're not through with it, we may, we may be and just don't know it, but we're still trying, trying, so I just wanted everybody to be, be aware of that, and then, um, you know, we've had a lot of recreation parks activities with some of the projects, as everybody knows, and, um, I was invited by the Mayor of Ashborough, David Smith, to come and view their new soccer park, eighty-five acres, Tony, I don't know if you've seen it or heard about it.
No, sir, I haven't.
It's, it's incredible, um, eighty-five acres that have, uh, and I might be off a little bit, but sixteen or nineteen synthetic soccer fields, lighted, uh, multi-tiered, they've got, uh, beach volleyball, and have the ability to play football, flag football on those synthetic fields, but, um, very impressive facility, so I appreciate, um, the Mayor kind of hosting that trip and showing me some of the things that they've done, so, really impressed with the synthetic soccer fields, we're not going to have that many, but I, I think, um.
It's a good start.
Yeah, it really is pretty cool what you can do with those.
And we, are we still on target for late fall?
We're, they're supposed to be finished by October first, uh, construction's already started, they're out there working, uh, hopefully everything will fall into place, we won't have the bad weather to hinder, and, uh, we're just keeping our fingers crossed, but that's, that's their timeline, it's by October first.
Good, thank you.
So, any other Council comments? Or none, any?
Mr. Mayor, could I mention one other thing about Central Park and Recreation Park? We were fortunate to host the Men and Women Senior National Softball Tournament this past week, and, uh, we had teams coming, we had seventy-eight teams all together, we had teams coming in Monday and Tuesday, the game started on last Wednesday and finished up this past Sunday, so they were here for a pretty good, uh, extended time, and, uh, hopefully, uh, made a pretty significant economic impact on our city.
Good, good, wonderful. Tony, the playground is going to be built at City Park.
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's not going to be something done overnight, for sure.
That department is moving pretty quick, we, uh, we're closing down the current playground Monday, and, uh, we got a demo of the, uh, the equipment there and, and prepare the site, the construction, uh, installation of the playground will be August twenty-first to twenty-third, just three days, and, uh, now, we will have to come back, it's going to have a core rubber surface, you know, to, for it to be accessible to the wheelchair and so forth, so that'll come in after the equipment's put in, and, uh, it'll take about two weeks, uh, to get that done and, and cured, and so, uh, hopefully, open the playground, uh, by mid-September, uh, and it's, uh, it'll be a really, really nice project.
Anything else? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
All right.